The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council this evening. Our, tonight is Monday, January 3rd, 2022, 7:00 PM. Please ask all of you to stand for the pledge and I will ask Councilwoman Moranty to please lead us.
My pleasure, lady.
To do that, in the United States of America, in the true republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to begin our agenda. We do not have any presentations tonight, nor do we have a public hearing. So I'll go right on to item number three and ask for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Motion to accept December's 20th, 2021 special meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to that meeting minutes? Having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and reports. Do we have any announcements and reports tonight? No? Okay, I have two. I'll make them quick. I attended the Committee on Aging on Thursday, December 9th. They meet monthly. It's been my, I had previously been liaison and I am now filling in for Councilwoman Moranty. They're a very active and vibrant group and they always have a lot going on. They talked about the holiday dinner, which is going to be served on Christmas Day at 11:30 AM by Danielle Rivera and her family. They make the food themselves. They've been doing this for a number of years and everybody that participates has a wonderful time. So I'm sure it was, I'm sure it was a wonderful event. They have some special events for the holidays. They did a tree trimming. There was going to be a New Year's Eve party on December 29th and the choir from Hall High School in West Hartford came and entertained them with some music. So it's always lovely to have that done. Couple of other things that are going on is the Commission on Aging would like to send a special thanks to the council for approving a dishwasher and a stove. You may remember that some months back, we approved the purchase of some of those items for their kitchen. They were most grateful for that and they, they'd want to send along the thanks to the council for us doing that for them. And, and that was it. They are going to be having their next meeting in January, the 13th, and they will be having their holiday celebration a month later at Lola's. So it's a very active group as Councilwoman Moranty knows and we often get updates through our assistant town manager. So they are, they're doing really well and they send best greetings to everybody. I also wanted to mention that on Sunday, I was at the distribution for the test kits that were given out to Plainville residents at Plainville High School. There are approximately 900 kits that were distributed to the residents. I have to tell you that the, our fire department and our police department, as always, did an amazing job organizing, setting up, and being there the whole time. The event went without a problem. I have to tell you, Town Manager Lee was there along with our assistant town manager, Matt. There were people checking IDs. Our superintendent of schools was there and I can say to this, people that received those kits were really delighted. They had to stay in their cars and we pretty much had them roll down their back window and throw the boxes into their car, but they were very happy to get them. Although we didn't have as many as we would like, we're hoping that we will get more in the future. And so that's some more of our residents who are struggling to get some of these supplies and some of these test kits will be able to get theirs as well. They also received N95 masks. There were approximately, I think around 10:30 in the morning, 350 cars already staged at the high school for this event. And I believe the cutoff was going to be 450 cars, estimating two people per car. That would have taken care of our 900, our 900 supplies. So it went very well and I think for the most part, people were pleased that the town of Plainville was able to organize it very quickly and there were no major issues in getting, getting that distribution done. So many thanks to the police department, to the fire department, to, to Ron Devert. He's, he was instrumental in acquiring those supplies for us. He is our fire marshal. And thanks to the town manager and your staff, Robert, again, for helping organize and put everything together so that the event went off without, without a problem. So it was, it was nice. Not everybody got one, but we did the best we could and with what we had. So we're looking forward to getting more as we move along. So that, that was my adventure for the weekend. Does anybody else have any announcements or reports they'd like to make? Some of these meetings don't happen until later in the month, so I guess we're good. Nothing else? All right. Okay. Moving along to appointments and resignations. We have a couple of very special appointments tonight, of which we're thrilled. Our first appointment is a police chief appointment. And before, before we go into the motion, I'm going to ask town manager, Robert Lee, to give you a little bit of background on Christopher Vangeli and some of the, did I get it right?
Van Gelli.
Van Gelli. They tried to prompt me before the meeting, but I just, I just forgot it. Anyway, Robert Lee is going to give us a little bit of information about Christopher. So if you would, Robert.
Yes, sure. Chris Van Gelli has been a Newtown police officer for 28 and a half years, beginning his service in June of 1993. He is a captain and has served as the second in command for them for five years. As captain, he runs the day-to-day operations, manages the individual bureau of departments, manages the budget, leads the department towards its mission, institutes and manages policies and procedures, and is a liaison for other town and outside agencies. He's also served as a lieutenant, sergeant, school resource officer, statewide narcotics, narcotics task force, and as a patrol officer. He serves at the Newtown Police Department's grant writer and created the department's citizen police academy and served as its coordinator for seven years. Is also a post-certified law enforcement instructor in domestic violence, serving in that capacity for the past 16 years. Captain Van Gelli is also the past president, secretary and treasurer of the Fairfield County Police Training Officers Association, and has served as an associate professor at Post University, teaching classes in criminal justice system. He has received awards and decorations from the Newtown Police Department, the Connecticut Coalition Against Domestic Violence, the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 704, ASME Council 15, Mothers Against Drug Driving, the Department of Children and Families, and the State of Connecticut General Assembly. Has also utilized his training and presentation skills to speak about his experience as a first responder to the Sandy Hook Elementary School shooting and to various law enforcement and other groups across the country in eight, in 17 different states. Captain Van Gelli has a bachelor's of arts degree in English literature from UConn and a master's degree in public administration from the American Military Academy. He has also completed training at the Police Executive Research Forum Senior Management Institute of Police, the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Leadership Institute, Sacred Heart University Police Leadership Institute, and the FBI New England Law Enforcement Executive Development Seminar. Chris has lived in Waterbury with his wife, Kimberly, for the last 19 years. They have been married for 22 years and have two children, Christopher, who attends Central Connecticut State University, and Lauren, who attends UConn, all three of which are here this evening. Captain Van Gelli describes himself as an extremely competent, educated, and confident law enforcement professional with a history of progressive responsibilities and diverse experience. He is dedicated to the idea of professional development and has always worked tirelessly to better his department, its officers, and their relationship with the community. On a personal note, I have come to know that Chris is very personable, enjoys speaking with citizens, and has a wry sense of humor. I believe he will serve the residents of Plainville in fine fashion.
Thank you, Robert. At this point in time, I would ask for a motion to approve, please, to appoint.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Christopher Van Gelli as police chief effective January 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this time, I'd just like to make a few comments and then after that, I would like to ask our new chief, Van Gelli, to step to the podium. I'm sure he has a few words that he'd like to share with us, but I would just like to mention just a couple of items. Plainville Police Department over the past year has been through an incredible ordeal emotionally and in many ways lasting. We lost Chief Matt Cutania unexpectedly and not some months thereafter, Officer Cybalski also passed due to an unexpected accident. The police, Plainville Police Department, I have to say, and give you my respect and admiration for the work that you carried on during these incredibly difficult times. You ensured public safety. In spite of these profound losses, you kept our residents, our businesses, and our schools safe, and you made public safety a priority. Most especially, I would like to thank Chief Peterson and Lieutenant Mullins for carrying on the duties of the Plainville Police Department during these very difficult trying times. I personally am of great thanks to you and I can't tell you how grateful I am that our police department continues to protect and serve in the most honorable way that you could possibly carry out. So having said that, I, again, thank you all for all of the work that you have done. I do have a badge for Chris and if you would join me at the podium with your wife, perhaps, perhaps Kimberly would like to pin for you. Okay?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Of course. You get to do this job, which is never easy. Okay. It's all yours.
You guess I can leave my mask on or take it off?
Oh, you can take it off if you like. Just hit the button so we can hear you through the mic, please. Perfect.
Okay. I did not know I was going to speak tonight, so I don't really have anything prepared. The first sentiment I'd like to relay is my thanks to the town council and to the town manager, Bob Lee. This was not an easy process. You guys did your due diligence very, very thorough and I can't believe I made it through there last week, but I just want to thank you especially for the trust that you guys have put into me. You know, I put a lot of time into this career and although it's bittersweet leaving my, my own department, I'm extremely excited to start a new department, especially one that has such a great reputation. Everybody that I've talked to has said without fail that it's a great group of guys and the community loves them. And that's exactly from where I'm coming from. So it'll be very much stepping into a town and a department that I'm used to. I appreciate what Eric has done very much. Thank you so much. The welcome that he's given me has been great, especially all, to see all the officers here and supported me tonight, you know, really, really touches me. And down to the core, I'm a cop and that's what I will always be. So thank you very much again for the trust you're putting in me and I will not let you down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the official job is done. Now, what I'm going to do is ask the council to take a brief pause. We're going to take a little recess and reconvene over in room 302. We're going to have some photographs taken and things like that. So we'll take about five to eight minutes and then we'll come back to the rest of our meeting. So may I have a motion for recess?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a brief pause. Thank you very much. Go right ahead.
Motion to appoint Paige Erdman as police officer effective January 6th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm going to ask Chief Peterson, who's here tonight, if he would come up and give us a little bit of information about Paige and fill us in on her background and things of that nature. So if you don't mind.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. The appointment of Paige will put us to full staff. We're excited to have her. She comes to us with quite a bit of experience. She's currently a correction officer for the state of Connecticut and she's also a Air Force reservist. She's had college experience, also has quite a bit of work experience in the security field. And after dealing with her, working with her, interviewing, I think she's going to make an excellent police officer. She's been working hard towards this day with her ultimate goal of becoming a police officer. So thank you for appointing her.
Thank you very much. You have a badge. Does Paige, would Paige like to say anything?
She probably wants to say a couple of words.
Thank you. Hi, Paige Erdman. I'm just really thankful for the opportunity to do this and it's a great town. Anybody I've also asked said that they haven't heard anything bad about this town. It's very like upbeat. Everyone's on the same page. Everyone's hard working, which I come from too, is a hardworking family. Same with corrections. Everybody does their part. So I'm really excited. So, thank you.
Great. Welcome and congratulations. Okay, thank you so much. We're very excited. This is a great evening for us here tonight with our police appointments. We do have a few more appointments this evening for our fire department. So may I have a motion for the next appointment, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Eric Petrowski, 19 Ravino Road, as probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint David Litke, 42 Franklin Avenue, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Dave, David Massey, a second assistant fire chief to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations to all those appointments as well. Okay, that takes care of our appointments tonight. Y'all can stay if you'd like. We just have a few more items to get through our agenda, but if, I'm sure you have important business to take care of.
We still have one.
We'll see you at another time. Thank you. Good night. Okay, moving along, Board of Ed is our other, our next meeting, town attorney. Do we have a report from the town attorney tonight? Attorney Mastriani?
Good evening, council. I do not have a report for tonight.
Okay, thank you. And report of the town manager, Mr. Lee?
Yes, I have several items. The first of which is entitled, "Road salt treated and non-treated." The road waste department utilizes both treated and non-treated salt during winter operations. Treated salt is generally used during colder conditions below 17 degrees. The road waste department is recommending the purchase of treated road salt utilizing a CROG bid. The low bidder for CROG was Morton Salt, Inc., in the amount of $68.85 per ton. They are currently proposing to purchase 500 tons for an estimated cost of $34,425. The road waste department is also recommending the purchase of non-treated salt utilizing a State of Connecticut contract. The low bid was also Morton Salt, Inc., in the amount of $60.66 per ton. They are currently proposing to purchase 500 tons for an estimated cost of $30,330. Monies to purchase these winter materials will come from the Town Aid Road account and there are items under new business regarding these recommendations. Next item I have is the ARPA Planning Committee update. The American Rescue Plan Act Committee, consisting of three town council members and town staff, have met several times to discuss the possible use of the American Rescue Plan funding received from the federal government. Plainville's ARPA authorization is $5.2 million. One half of that amount has already been received with the second half due in June. The committee reviewed the Treasury advisory information provided to date regarding the possible use of the funds. The committee is unanimous that because the funds are one-time monies, they should be used for one-time purchases. After some review, the ARPA committee is suggesting that some large capital items should be purchased with these funds to alleviate the need to utilize local taxpayer dollars in the future. These large purchases have been deferred because of the potential impact to the town budget. Several projects discussed include the purchase of a VATCon catch basin cleaner. That's a $450,000 item. Sidewalk repair and replacement, suggesting a possible use of $600,000. To replace the aging boilers at the high school, that's a $600,000 item. Replace a Class A apparatus fire truck, and this is several years out, that's $780,000. Extend sewers into the Honor Heights area. That's a partial payment of $360,000. Replace the chiller at Tofflin Elementary School. That's a $300,000 item. And to replace the radio system at the fire department, and that's a $400,000 proposed items. And there are several other large ticket items as well. The committee will plan a public hearing on their recommendation during the month of February. So we hope to get some publicity about that out to the public about what the ARPA funding is about and what is proposed to be, to be recommended and to get feedback from the public about what's being proposed. The next item I have is the town manager search firm discussion. Three firms have expressed interest in assisting the town council in their efforts to hire the next town manager. They are Randy Frank Consulting, Inc., Gov HR USA, and Raftellus. All three have experience in recruiting for executive leadership positions in Connecticut and the Northeast. It is anticipated by each, each of the firms that this process will take three plus or minus months to have a new town manager in place. There is an item under new business regarding this item. Next item I have is the capital projects additional appropriation. The fiscal year '22 budget included the use of $869,150 from the undesignated fund balance to support the capital improvement budget. Chapter 3, Section 11 of the town charter limits any individual appropriation of unassigned fund balance to no more than 1% of the town budget. Any appropriation above the 1% of the town budget amount would require referendum approval. To make the appropriation from the unassigned fund balance, a public hearing must first be held. Town staff is recommending that the town council hold a public hearing on January 18th, 2022 at 7:00 PM to hear public comment on the appropriation of $600,000 from the unassigned fund balance to support the fiscal year '22 capital improvement budget. The remaining amount of $269,150 needed will be made at a future time before the end of the fiscal year. And there is an item under new business regarding this recommendation to set the public hearing date. The next item I have is the Christmas tree disposal. Plainville residents who have trees may bring them to the transfer station at no charge on Granger Lane anytime beginning Monday, January 3rd. It's already started and I was up there on, over the weekend and several people have dropped off trees already. Until Friday, January 14th. Trees only should be placed in the designated collection area. If you use a bag to transport your tree, we ask that you remove the tree from the bag and dispose of the bag in your regular household trash container. If you're unable to transport your tree, the road waste department will once again be collecting them. Residents are asked to leave their Christmas trees at the curb by Sunday, January 9th, which is this upcoming Sunday. The road waste department will collect them during the week of January 9th. Please be sure they are free of ice and snow, are not in the road, and do not block any sidewalk or, or walkways. Questions can be referred to the Public Works Administration at 860-793-0221, extension 7176. Next item I have is the police chief update. And Chief Eric Peterson is here this evening to give an update on the police department operation. You lost all of your members. They, they ran out. They didn't want to listen to your update apparently. Maybe they're familiar with it. So.
I'm not comfortable with that boring stuff.
Okay, sounds good.
Hello again.
Yep, welcome.
So just been busy, continuing to work on the budget. You know, we lost Eddie, Eddie LaPage a little earlier than we wanted to, to retirement, but Michelle Ibitz and myself have been working pretty hard to get everything to meet the deadline. Also, I've been putting together mandated mental health evaluation, evaluations that are required under the police accountability bill. We're going to be doing those coming in the next three months along with mandated drug testing. So everything with the police accountability bill, we're up, we're up to schedule with policies, training, and now with testing. Also been preparing for our new recruit, Paige Erdman, to begin. So excited to get to fully staffed. That puts us at 40 with the chief being appointed tonight and Paige, that puts us at 40. So what I'd like to be able to do is work with the chief in the future, just like I explained to you guys at the workshop a little while ago, that I really do feel that we need to get our overtime under control. And a lot of mandated overtime. So I think him and I should be able to work together and make some type of presentation along with what I discussed before, maybe adding an officer to try and, and cut down on that overtime. So that'll be in the future. We also were awarded a $42,000 JAG grant that lets us buy equipment that we otherwise don't have money for in our budget. So with that, we are putting together a, a schedule and, and when to use it and, and also what we're going to be spending that money on. It comes at a good time. And also, the last thing, just been continuing to monitor the COVID. We've lost, you know, officers that have been out, get a few back and a few have gone out. So we've been able to do it in spurts where a whole, not too many people at once have been getting it. So we're, we're still plugging away and, and a good, good position. And other than that, the, everything else is going pretty smooth. Anybody have any questions?
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Peterson tonight? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple more items. Next one is a COVID-19 update. This is coming from the, the Plainville-Suddington Health Director, Susan Lonzac. Plainville's positivity rate is at an all-time high of 78.8 per 100,000 population. There was 115 cases last week of people who had COVID and from Plainville. A Pfizer booster clinic for 60 and over is scheduled for January 12th from 1:30 to 4:30 at the senior center. Eligible individuals can call the senior, the senior center directly to schedule an appointment. That begins tomorrow. And they may fill up relatively quickly. If they do, they have plans to have a second booster clinic as well. But we encourage people who haven't gotten their booster and wants to get one, they can schedule it for January 12th from 1:30 to 4:30 at the senior center. Try to make it as convenient as possible. New school guidance has been put forth starting this week. Isolation and quarantine times have been shortened and contact tracing and the screening and stay program have been eliminated. Because community transmission rates are so high, they believe it's ineffective. More times can be spent identifying and handling sick children and staff. So that, we are waiting to see if we're going to get an additional delivery of test kits. We do have plenty of masks, including N95 masks and KN95 masks, which are the better masks. Anybody who wants to get some from the, from the town can contact Ron Devert, who, whose phone number is 860-793-0221. I believe the extension is 7174. So, and he'll make arrangements to, you know, get you additional, better masks than, you know, than, you know, these. And, and if people, you know, you can get them in the store as well, but you know, if you want them, we have plenty of supply. And if people need several of them, they're, they're available to, to the residents as well. They, those were also handed out during the, during the test kits and we'll, if we have a second one, we'll hand out additional masks as well. Next item I have- Next item I have, which I didn't have in our, in my notes, was there is the joint meeting scheduled for the Town and Board of Education, it's, it's a, it's a joint budget meeting to discuss the fiscal year '23 budget planning. That is scheduled for Wednesday, January 19th at 6:00 PM. This is going to be a Zoom meeting, so it won't be an in-person meeting, it'll be a Zoom meeting, it'll be available for the public, we'll be getting information out about how people can listen in on the, on the Zoom as well. Some of the items on the agenda will be the fiscal year '21 budget results, although we don't have the audit completed yet, we do have, you know, pretty close to, you know, how, how fiscal year '21 ended. We will talk about the anticipated and known expenditure increases and revenue changes for fiscal year '23. We would certainly talk about the grand list and the impact of revaluation, which is going to really, you know, be somewhat confusing as we move through the budget process, but we'll try to make it as understandable as possible. But the starting point of that is, is January 19th, 6:00 PM, and it'll be a Zoom meeting, and we'll assist the public in, in, you know, getting links to that and be able to listen in as well. I think it'll make it easier, we, we generally haven't had a lot of public, you know, attendance at these meetings that we've had at the library in the past, and perhaps this will make it easier, there'll be, you know, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation, both myself and the Superintendent of Schools, Steve LaPage, and I think it'll give people the opportunities, you know, to, to get updated on where we stand, including the capital improvement proposed plan for next year as well. The last item I have is, is happenings, which I'll turn the microphone over to Matt Daskel, the Assistant Town Manager, to update on some happenings, and then both of us will be available for any questions or comments you may have for us.
Good evening, through you, Town Manager Lee and Council Chairperson. Robert took some of the exciting events that I had to report. We obviously have the Christmas Tree Disposal that everybody was made aware of, and we'll be posting that information on the town's website. The Revenue Collector is reminding folks of the second installment of real estate taxes, personal property, and motor vehicle supplemental bills are due January 1st, 2022. Bills have 30 days to pay without interest, so that is this month. Animal Control is hosting a bottle drive, the Bottle and Can Drive. This is to raise funds to assist with the cost of surgery for an injured dog named Princess. Refundable cans and bottles only can be left outside the Animal Control Dog Pound at 29 Granger Lane, and that's, that's through this month at this time. A brief reminder about the Municipal Broadband Interest Survey. The Town of Plainville launched an online broadband interest survey for residents and business owners. The purpose of the poll is to gauge public support for building a municipally-owned fiber-to-the-home network. We discussed this at a previous work session. That is still available online, and it will be through June, and the information is on the town website, as well as the links. The Senior Center has a number of exciting events, as always. The COVID-19 Booster Clinic, again, that was mentioned earlier, for residents 60 and over, and this is by appointment only, it's going to be Wednesday, January 12th. Call the Senior Center beginning tomorrow to schedule that appointment, so just a reminder on that. Grandparents raising grandchildren, if you're a grandparent or relative who's raising a grandchild, niece, or nephew, you're not alone, there's a support group at 10:30 AM on Tuesday, January 18th. Contact the Senior Center or online through their Schedule Plus program. Other classes include their Veteran's Social Hour, fitness classes, nutritional trivia bingo, and all of this will be available on the town website. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Okay, that concludes the reports. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Robert or Matt with their information they shared? Are you all good? Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Yep, moving on, we are now in the public comments section during this time of our meeting. We invite the public to come to one of the microphones here in the room. You'll have one opportunity for three minutes if you wish to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council tonight?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. The only comment I had is, the Town Manager gave a list of what was needed for the capital appropriation that we presented at a future meeting, and am I, am I correct, right? The truck, the possibility of a truck, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, that's about the American Rescue Plan, yes, we'll have a complete list that we will publish, and then we will ask.
At the public hearing?
Even before the public hearing, we'll make it, we'll make it available online and on the, at the town website, and we'll, you know, and we'll provide some links on social media where people can access that before the.
That's, you're way ahead of me. I just wanted to know because there's quite a list you were giving out there, and.
And there's even more on the list than that, so.
The old man has problems remembering all that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Happy New Year to you. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Representative Pettit, nice to see you tonight, you have any, anything to share with us? Okay, step right up.
Speaking to the hordes. Speaking to the choir. William Pettit, 132 Redstone Hill. But I'm here in my role as state rep, this is probably going to happen a bunch of times since Town Manager Lee is going to have a slow-rolling retirement. So, I, I do this for the folks of Plainville, because everybody here knows, knows what he means. And his retirement party was supposed to be this Thursday, but it has been postponed till May due to COVID concerns, and as I said to Lisa in the office, that I'm concerned that both Henry and I won't be there because it's the, it's the last week of session, so we're probably going to be doing crazy things until midnight most of those nights that last week, as if things go as they've always gone in the past. So, in essence, this, this is a citation Robert's had to sit through in 43 years, probably way too many of these, I don't know how many he's received in the past, but this is a citation from the General Assembly introduced by myself and Senator Henry Martin. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its serious congratulations to Robert E. Lee. The joyous occasion of your retirement after 14 years of dedicated professional and personal service to the Town of Plainville, and as I noted, 43 overall in this profession. Your dedication to the citizens of Plainville, as well as your leadership and many contributions to our community, including the purchase of Robertson Airfield, progress towards the completion of the statewide greenway, steady leadership as a founding member of the Plainville Community Fund, and daily responses to citizens' concerns, as we all see on social media, which is an incredibly treacherous place to venture in, Mr. Lee has done so steadfastly and consistently through his time as a Town Manager, to, to communicate with people, to tell them what's the truth. People throw something out on social media that's completely wrong, and he hops on and goes, "No, this is what's happening," and he does it without anger, and he does it without rancor, he says, "This, this is, this is what it is," boom, and all of a sudden, you just see a flood of people thanking him for providing the correct information. You have served as leader and role model statewide in multiple municipal committees and boards for 43 years. Best wishes for a long and happy retirement. This is dated ahead of time, they asked me if we should change it, I said, "You're never going to look at this date again for the rest of your life," so we could leave it the same, save the state the money from reprinting it. This is 6th day, this was supposed to be January 6th, signed by Martin Looney, the President of the Senate, Matt Ritter, Speaker of the House, and Denise Merrill, Secretary of State, so congratulations, and I would say, you know, I've only been, I've been in the job for five years, and Robert, like for many of you, has been the go-to guy. When I have a question, he invariably knows the answer. When I talk to people around the states and, and different towns and communities, that's where they say, hmm, you know, you should ask Robert, he knows more about this than I do. So, I get referred back to Robert more often than, and we're, we're going to miss it, but I know you're going to stand for two or three months while the council tries to find someone to, you know, step into John Wooden's shoes here, always a tough, tough act to follow, you know, or Lou Gehrig, I don't know who, who you'd like to be compared to. 14 years, probably not Lou Gehrig, but, but we thank, thank you for your service, and we're really, the Town of Plainville really owes you a great debt of gratitude for everything you've done for the town over the past 14 years, so thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Representative Pettit. Okay, does anybody else wish to say anything? Speech, speech, speech. Nobody else? Speech.
It's a little, a little early for that, so.
(laughing)
But I, you know, I've told people that I've enjoyed every single day that I've worked for the Town of Plainville, you know, it was a hard decision to make to, to, to announce retirement, it was a relatively easy decision to make, after speaking to my wife, to continue until we have a new manager on board, I want to leave the town in good stead as best as possible, and, and I know the council will endeavor to, to hire someone who's competent and, and you have the trust in to, to move the town forward and continue. The momentum that we've built up, in, in concert with the Town Council, for sure, and my staff, I think we have a good working staff, and we continue to make progress, and I'm proud of all the work that we've done over the years, and, and I think we, the town's in pretty good position going forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Robert. Okay, if there are no other citizens that wish to make comment, we're going to move along with our agenda, there's no old business at this point in time, so on to new business. May I have a motion for item number one, please?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Under old business, we might want to discuss between the council members what consulting firm we're going to be hiring for the Town Manager Search, that hasn't been decided yet.
Well, that is under item number three, so you want to talk about that under item number three?
I don't know if, if you want to discuss it under old business, or wait till we get this, whatever you desire to do.
Okay, I think the appropriate place is we're going to have a motion to appoint, and so at that point, we can, we can do it at that time.
Thank you.
All right, we can just open, we can even open up discussion before we actually make a formal motion, just for input from everybody, okay?
All right, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2022-13, Non-Treated Road Salt, under Capital Region Council of Government, CRCOG, bid number 718 to Morton Salt, Inc., in the amount of $68.85 per ton.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2022-14, Treated Road Salt, under State Contract Number 20PSX0085 to Morton Salt, Inc., in the amount of $60.66 per ton.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number three. So, if you would like to open up discussion, Councilman Underwood?
Yes.
You can do that, go ahead.
Yes, open for discussion, motion to appoint a consulting firm to hire our Town Manager to perform the Town Manager Search.
Okay. Okay, so we had, we had been given three potential businesses that we were asked to look at to determine who we thought would be the best fit to take on our Town Manager Search, and does anybody want to talk about who they feel they thought was a good choice, or what, what some of the options are? There was, a few of them were from out of state, and doesn't mean they can be excluded, but I just looked at some of the, some of the clients that they had, I tried to focus on who, you know, actually represented a number of municipalities in Connecticut. Some of them had more than others, some of them only had a handful, so I kind of used that as one of my gauges. One of them, I, I looked at the pricing for all of them, two of them were fairly close, one was a little bit higher, although there may be extra charges to whomever we end up going with, so does anybody have any particular, one they think was more outstanding than others, or?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
I favor this, the Randy Frank Consulting, Inc.
Okay.
I think that they're the best fit for us, so that, that would be my choice.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I agree with the Councilwoman, Beth Hopkins.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair. Would you like to go first?
Madam Chair, you know, I did eliminate the third choice, it was Raftellus, they, for several reasons, the cost was higher, they did not include a sample profile, so it kind of put them aside, so I really looked at the, the other two, and I'm fine with either of them. In some ways, I liked the GovHR, I thought the profiles that they done, did were just exemplary in many ways, but I'm, I'm fine with the Randy Frank as well, I did like their Connecticut-based experience, and also, we will have the opportunity to review the drafts of the profile that they do, and we could critique them and suggest changes before those become finalized, so that, that was my, my position.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
I would like to go with Randy Frank Incorporated, for the same reasons that everybody else has already mentioned, and I will add, I believe the Town of Plainville, maybe Robert can correct me on this, Town of Plainville has worked with Randy Frank in the past.
That's right.
For my time up here, so I think, you know, if we already have a relationship, why not build upon it?
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Cat Zero.
I would agree also Randy Frank, just because, as Dave, or as Jake already mentioned, that we've done business with them, and they seem to be an exemplary company.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All in?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, okay, that's, it sounds like, I, I'm also fine with using that firm, they have a long list of clients, again, they have represented a vast number of municipalities in Connecticut, which I think that, that says a bit for their relationships and those who they know within the state, so I think that might, for me anyway, it added a little bit more to their, you know, desirability in terms of one that we should choose, so, okay, so shall we go ahead and make the formal motion, please?
Certainly. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Randy Frank to perform a Town Manager Search.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, we've already had our discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Item number four.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment regarding an additional appropriation to the Capital Project Fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, any opposed? Motion carries, and item number five, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refund as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries, so that takes care of our new business items. Mr. Lee, do we have any other items for discussion this evening?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything they'd like to bring forward at this time? Okay, we do not have an executive session scheduled, so may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, meetings adjourned.